Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out tonight. It is 7:37. This is our March 25 meeting. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge a flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Saba Alzayed.
I'm here. Thank you.
Madam President, we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock, approximately 7:35 with regard to real estate matters.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right. First up here for council consideration, we have our February 25 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Motion for Mr. Shank, a second for Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation from the Bridgeport Community Fund. You're welcome to come up, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening. I assume everyone was, the report was circulated. Okay. So it's just, obviously, just the general disposition of our facilities at the park. Some of our proposed activities are tentative activities for the year. Just some changes from last year. We did receive a resignation from Tony Tarantino in December. He just, you know, his time was done. So that kind of, we're in a little transition there, trying to get all that taken care of because he took our taxes and things like that. So we're, we're in a learning curve. He's helping us make that transition. And probably that, with that will come some more changes in the first part of this year. I guess to get right to it, we need a playground. You know that, and I know you're working on it. I didn't know until post, you know, until after I posted this report or sent it to you that there is a, we're in a second phase of a, Keith, you would, Mr. Truman, you'd know this better than I, you, we're in the second kind of phase of a, of a grant application. Is that correct?
We, we have, we have a small, we have a $50,000 grant secured that we're waiting on paperwork to execute that. We also, last fall, applied to the, the local share, the LSA funding program, which is the casino share money that goes back to municipalities through the state. That was for, I believe, $546,000 that we applied for last year. Have not heard anything on that one.
Okay. Just to put it in perspective that you all know, it's not a, so people understand, we run on roughly $24,000, $26,000 a year. This isn't a $20,000, this is not a $30,000, $40,000, this is a $300,000 problem just for the playground. So when you see activities happening at the park, and, and we take a little bit of a whooping, or a lot of a whooping, on social media, why are they doing this and not spending that money on a playground? We could not do anything with that $24,000 for 12 years, and we'd just be getting to the amount of money we needed to, to address the playground issue. It's been identified. There are some other very low-level projects that we can take care of up there, some tree replanning, some tree maintenance. It's, it's expensive. It's listed in the report. Just routine, more than anything. Some of it's, some of it's paid for through memorial contributions. So there'll be some tree work there this year. There's some signage updates and repair that needs to be done for the walking track. And I've also listed some mid-range and long-term projects, one of which is that walking track, which is by far the, the most-used amenity at the park. Even if the playground was fully, you know, packed every single day, it wouldn't be packed in the winter, and that walking track is, you know, dusk to dawn, 365 days a year. So out there in the future, and that's like, that's like paving a road around the top of the park. So that's, that's a big looming expense, probably, you know, repairing it as we go along, replacing it, I don't know. It would have to be done all at once. Other than that, the structures at the park are in good condition, solid. A lot of them have new roofs. One of them's working on getting a new roof right now. Tennis and pickleball and basketball are up-to-date and relatively, I mean, within two years, brand-new or resurfaced. We have some benches and bleachers that need repaired. Like I mentioned, landscaping issues that are kind of routine. The school district is doing some work there for us to upgrade the safety and the condition of the one main field. And we also have Anthony Chiquino Field, which is, its, its issues are less condition and more location, and always will be. It, it has a little bit of a stigma because of what's next, stigma because of what's next door, and some of that's real. You know, there, there's odors there and issues there that prevent a long-term usage of that field. And then the other item where we're looking to make some, get back online is the museum downstairs. We've started to take in some furniture. We've acquired some new artifacts over, even this past weekend. And we have some monies that are, were donated in memoriam of certain people that passed away, Nicholas Rotondo Senior and his sister Carmelo Rangers, that are earmarked for that purpose. And we believe we have more than enough to, to get that project back online and completed. By June 1st would be our goal there. As I said, Upper Marion School District's JV program is, has all their paperwork in, and they'll be using that field for their games this year. Bridgeport Upper Marion Little League, I know Mr. Heil was there this weekend, maybe some others I don't know about, they're set for their season. Bridgeport Bocce starts at the end of April, they're set. And then, as I said, we have our usual activities that we're, we're working on scheduling now, working around schedules with other permitted entities at the park. We know our immediate goal, again, not to beat it, is the playground, landscaping, and some bleachers that have to be worked on. The Hurst Street parking lot's pretty well-identified and talked about, a pretty bad situation. And then there's some mid-range goals. Probably the John Todd Playground, which is a smaller toddler playground, is in relatively good condition, but again, now would be the time to start replacement before it becomes a, it could be a $10,000, $20,000 situation now. In five years, it's going to be another $250,000 problem. And then it's, again, the long-term projects would be Hurst Street and the, the walking track. We're trying, we're learning to work within the confines of the funding agreement. Again, Tony's passing that off to us and the knowledge of how to work that. I hope it's going well. I think it's going well. And other than that, I'll field questions from council, administration, or anyone in the public.
So we, we've got $50,000?
We have $50,000 guaranteed and secured. It's, it's certainly not in hand.
Not in hand, yeah.
And it's, it's a reimbursement-based grant, anyway.
And the, the second round that you had discussed where we applied for 500, just, I know we talked about it months ago, but I don't remember exactly the details of that grant. What was the, the funding source and the process for that?
It was the, it was the, the LSA Local Share Account Grant. Again, it's state casino revenue, revenues that are dispersed from casinos through, via the state, and through the DCD. Don't have, just inquired a couple weeks back for an update and received nothing. So don't really have an, an idea of exactly when they're going to make a decision, but I would say hopefully by this fall.
Yeah, I believe didn't the-
Typically, August or September is the LSA decisions.
Yeah, I read the report with detail, and I appreciate that. In the report you provided to council, it didn't shy away from any of those issues. You just stated them. And so if anyone thinking that you're glossing over those, that's incorrect. I, I think that you really laid into all of the individual issues of the playground, and we all want to get that done. The unfortunate thing about government, one of the many unfortunate things, is how long it takes to get money. And like you said, we have $50,000, and no, we don't have it yet, but there's no sense in spending that $50,000 until you can do the whole thing, because then you're fixing a swing, and it doesn't fit into the bigger project, then you're wasting that money. So we have to wait to have it all in. But I appreciate that you're working with us to do that. And I think that everyone's working in good faith to get that done. So thank you. I do think that there are a lot of people who are voicing their interest in being involved in things, and whether it's the park or other stuff in the borough. So if there's ways that you want to get them involved, I don't know if there's ways that they can be involved. People don't always know what they can do to help the park. Yeah, anything you can do to let them know or communicate, that would be great.
I, I can work on being better at that. There, a lot of our events are, I don't want to say the same every year. We try to change them, but they just almost operate themselves. And we, as long as we have those same people, we, they just happen. I, I don't want to say like there's, discount the work that people are doing, but a lot of these, these, you know, scheduled annual events, you know, holiday-themed events, things of that nature, just happen. As far as the, the maintenance up there, a lot of that's being done by, you know, the school district already, or we have to ask for an assist from Public Works. It's beyond what, what even a handyman could do at this, you know, this point. It's not, they're not small projects.
And, and I have talked with people at the Little League, PTC from the school, and other clubs in the area, and it's really hard to get people to be really involved. These people are, if you have kids, you're busy with getting them to and from events and helping, making sure they're able to. And then if you're a coach, or you're helping with management, it's just, I, I think it's hard to appreciate just how much time of, the time commitment involved in that. But anything that you guys can do to help bring people in the community in, to give them ways that they can support, whether it's donating money, donating time, just letting them know, that would be great. I think people would appreciate it.
Understood.
I noticed that you had a vacancy on your board. Are you doing anything to actively recruit for that position? There might be people in the community here tonight, actually, that might be interested.
We, we're going to post that. Like I said, we weren't caught off-guard by Tony leaving. I guess I just thought I could keep sweet-talking him and stay in forever, and he finally, you know, rightfully and, and just rightfully said, no, I have to, he had other things to focus on. So it just kind of threw us into a, where are we at now? His work, what he did there as a treasurer, he was very detailed, very solid. It's, there's taxes. It's nothing, we're just trying to get as much as we can from him, but we're going to, you know, we're going to post all that publicly and take applications and everything like that. We're just trying to get back on our, our feet. It's, it was a tough end of the year for, for the park board, to be honest with you. After some meetings down here and some public response to what we did, it was hard to get our own people motivated, in all truthfulness. And there was, you know, some of us had just personal things that, that put us on the shelf for a little bit. And we're, I'm trying to get all this back online by April 15th. May 15th is our tax date for nonprofit. So we, we're real, I'm really just trying to get that tax, the taxes done. That's what's on my mind is, let's get, get Tony Tarantino to help us transfer this tax to a new person. Would I love to have, you know, I think the board would love to have a treasurer in place by then that could sit through that with him, go to our accountant, follow through that process one year with Tony by their side, and then take it over. Ideally, that would be what we're looking for. Part of that is, we're, we're not just looking for a, a board member, to be honest with you. We're looking for a board member with, you know, accounting experience. And we, we, you know, serious accounting experience that can really keep our books, like Tony was taking care of them. Sounds, or Mr. Bell has had access to them, and Tony was top-notch.
Tony, Tony is very valuable.
Yeah. Yeah.
In addition to finding a new treasurer, it would be great if you could find someone that could maybe help with like grant writing, or even just fundraising, just to be able to do throughout the year, just somebody that's pro-active with keeping the books up, you know, as much as possible to be able to, you know, we'll, we'll help however we can, but we got to meet in the middle somewhere.
Okay, understood.
Public comments at the end of the agenda? Thank you for asking, though. We will certainly get there.
I, I would just make a quick note that, you know, in addition to the, the items that you, you had mentioned, Mr. Bennett, that, that need to be done at the park, and things that are on tap for, for being done, I know that we, you know, have discussed over the last year that, that the borough had plans to resurface the main lot at Ninth and Grove Street.
Yes.
This current grant project that we are, paving project that we just awarded the bid to, which should begin in the next several weeks, we don't have an exact start date yet, but redoing the, the main parking lot at Ninth and Grove is in this year's round of paving. So I'll, I'll reach out to the park board and notify you guys as, as soon as I can when to anticipate that taking place.
Okay. Also, I did forget to mention that we, with, along with the borough, did some serious upgrades, in my opinion, and much-needed and very-important upgrades to the Grove Street Pavilion, which included lighting. And, and it's, it's lighting, and I guess you could just say, well, it's just lighting, but it didn't exist prior to this improvement. It also improved the electric service at that pavilion. It's, it's becoming increasingly used as an amenity. We had a wedding and a wedding reception there last year. And our pavilions and parks are getting, you know, rented more and, more and more, with more frequency. Last year was really a spike in, in private-party rentals. But that lighting helped. For those not familiar, if you're going down Grove Street at midnight or 2:00 in the morning, and you're an officer on patrol, you can't see anything. If those lights are on because there's movement, you can see it very clearly. And it helped identify some issues and correct those issues, as I'm, it's my understanding. So I thank you for, for taking our suggestion on that, and thank the police for using it to their best ability.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for coming out. Appreciate the report.
I may not stay around, so if anyone hearing from the public has anything for the-
If council doesn't have any issues, I don't mind switching over the agenda.
I'll stick around if you'd like me to, but-
Well, I mean, you also have a life and a schedule, so I don't want to, don't force you to be here.
It's not that, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, if council doesn't have any issues with it, I don't, I, whatever, we move around. Sure. If, if people want to come up, if residents would like to come up and speak, just make sure you're stating your name and address. You're welcome to come up, ma'am.
I was just going to ask, outside of becoming a-
Miss, name and address, please.
Rebecca Ventor, 513 Grove Street.
Thank you.
Yep. Outside of becoming a board member for the community fund, are there other ways that folks can get involved? And like, how can we be aware of your meetings? Like, is that shared publicly? That's my first question.
The meetings is a page that I left out of here accidentally. I called Councilman Nolan, who is our council liaison to the park board. We, our attempt is to have them on the first Monday. Schedules don't always permit. We also try to use Ms. Nolan to have them here, but we bounce them around. We typically use Facebook to advertise what we're doing. Obviously, it doesn't seem like I'm very good at that, but I will, I guess all I can do is possibly share it with Keith and start to, I'm just going to call you Keith. I apologize for that. I know it's not, I know it's not-
I've been called worse today, in fact.
Okay. Is, maybe we'll use the Borough Blast, or have those made announced here through-
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can, I can make announcements at council meetings, or you can put it on the Borough Blast. I know we just need to figure out timing, since we do have the community events meetings every other first Monday of the month at 6:30, but I think we can, we can work with that time, especially if we announce it in advance.
I mean, we typically don't use the Borough email system, but if we add that, we'll add, make sure they're being announced here. That's two immediate ways we can make that change, if that's, if that would work.
I would, would, do we need any input from council since it, I mean, I'm completely amenable to using our, to pushing that out over our communication platforms, unless there's any issue with that?
Anything that helps the residents and serves the residents, and I think we're in great partnership with the fund, so it makes sense to me.
We wouldn't, I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't expect you to just pass through our, you know, wording. If it needs to be changed, your address, that's, you know, it'd be, obviously, it would be fine.
Two more questions. What is the nonprofit status of the community fund today?
As far as, is it active and correct, or?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We, it, everything is on, we're in good standing with the state and our, our nonprofit status.
I think that kind of came up a little, talking about the board member, but just curious around the grants. Like, have we sort of exhausted what can be accessed there, or is that more of a capacity question for the community fund? Like, just curious from my own perspective on that.
We, we would lean on Keith to, to seek out grants. We don't necessarily have avenues for that. I'm not going to lie, I've tried to do, to get grants through the, the board on our own, and those, they, they were just failed attempts, for lack of a better, a better word. We've had, we've had a couple of really close misses with private funding for the playground that just fell through for two, for multiple, for a couple different, you know, two different reasons, which I guess happens with private funding. It was a big ask. It was a serious conversation that was getting closer and closer, and then they just fell apart. And as far as, you know, local businesses that, even combined, I don't know that we have many that could, it, it's a big number.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big hole we're trying to dig out of, to be honest with you.
And I'll add that a lot of the grants, right here, sorry. That's okay. A lot of the grants that the board and Mr. Bennett and we have looked at, it's going to be a lot more successful if it's a government entity seeking that grant. So the, even if they had a great grant writer, a lot of the, those grants are only going to come in through having the, the kind of infrastructure that a borough or county has. So that's why we're working together to do that. We've been, and we're moving in a process faster than ever before to get that done. It's just the way the process goes. But they have been working with us to get that funding. And I know that those local businesses, to kind of add to what Mr. Bennett's saying is, if we get the big project, that we can get those local business, hopefully those local businesses can tip in on the extra stuff, like benches or other things to supplement. So I, none of us can guarantee that it'll all be great after August, like after the, but, you know, hopefully, they can have a whole plan once that's coming to fruition with that money. But you just have to get that money first.
Along with that, and I think the genesis of the funding agreement was because it went along with some other, you know, other agreements that made it possible for the borough administration to act on our behalf in seeking grants.
Yeah, and just to close that circle, the municipality will be entitled to money that they just won't be entitled to. They can't even apply for what we can apply for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, feel free to come on up and just make sure you're stating your name and address for me.
It's Mary Anisters in 440 Bush Street. Brandy, thank you so much for presentation. Being a resident of Bridgeport for a long time, plus an active user of Bridgeport Park for 10 years with my both, two kids, I witnessed several times of property damage being done to Bridgeport Park. So my, it's more a comment or a cry for help, I guess, more than a question. And while we are thinking about looking for money for future upgrade to the playground, once it is done, we need to find a better way to protect the property, because right now, it's going to be unfortunate if all that work will go to nothing, because right now, so much stuff is being, bad stuff is being done to playground. It's by kids, by adults. There are also dogs are being taken inside into the playground. So we have to figure out a way, and, and trying to talk to adults or to kids is not always the best solution, because it might become not a good situation. So we need to find a way to not just educate our kids at home, but do some proactive work with the community. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I think, hi, over here again. I know that's part of the reason why we've together been talking about the lighting issues and some cameras over the past few years, too. So it's been on everyone's mind as we move forward. So your, your concerns are valid.
I know we talked the other day, Mariana, at the park, and just so everyone is aware, there is a, that was another joint project between administration, borough, and, and the park board, I want to say, two or three years ago. A significant upgrade would be an understatement to our camera surveillance system there at the park. There is obviously damage and vandalism and things like that. The best thing I can do, and it's not easy, it's not always a safe feeling when you're there, and in the middle of the day, you see neighbors that you recognize or can identify at the park, but we certainly would appreciate it if you made a call at that time, or even noted the time and the date, and when you got home, called and just, you can tell Chief Beretta's personnel downstairs, I was at the park at this time, on this date, and hopefully it happened in vision of a camera.
I was going to say, we have, there's 12 cameras up at the park now, right? Is that correct?
Yes. And well, yeah, in the main system, yes. There's some at the other end. Like I said, this, the upgrades were significant. It's a, it's a terrific system for our park. And it's able to be accessed remotely by different departments of the borough.
We talked at a recent meeting, some residents from the Riverfront Development came in and discussed that they were having issues with people allowing their dogs to make their messes on the sidewalk and not clean up after themselves. And one of the things we talked about was, look, if you're seeing that, you know, maybe you say something to the person, but don't, don't feel like you're being petty by contacting the police. If it's something that's affecting a public space, and you don't have the maturity to take care of that, you should be called out on it. So, you know, if somebody sees something up at the park, you know, damage, property that's being damaged, call the police. If you, call 911. You know, when we were kids, it was drilled into us that 911 is for emergencies, but that's changed. Now they want to use that as a clearinghouse for, you know, basically anything. So don't feel like you're wasting the, the police's time by calling them about somebody breaking bottles against the wall up, up at the park. Call them, and, and, you know, Chief Beretta will go address it.
And the great part about being in a small town is that they will be there in like 30 seconds. So just make the call, and they will help you out. I would really encourage every resident who sees anything to do that. They're really great.
Absolutely. So you guys are our eyes and ears. There's only, depending on what time of day, there could be two or four police officers on, usually two people on patrol. So depending on what's going on some other place, it's a small town, but still, with business, we'll act on everything. And I ask everyone, and make sure to ask the police officer to call you back. I tell them, I want you to call everybody back, even if they don't- but don't, don't feel like you're being petty by contacting the police. If it's something that's affecting a public space and you don't have the maturity to take care of that, you should be called out on it. So, you know, if somebody sees something up at the park, you know, damage, property that's being damaged, call the police. If you, call 911. You know, when we were kids, it was drilled into us that 911 is for emergencies, but that's changed. Now they wanna use that as a clearinghouse for, you know, basically anything. So don't feel like you're wasting the police's time by calling them about somebody breaking bottles against the wall up at, up at the park. Call them and, and, you know, Chief Beretta will go address it.
And the great part about being in a small town is that they will be there in like 30 seconds. So just make the call and they will help you. I would really encourage every resident who sees anything to do that. They're really great.
Absolutely. So you guys are our eyes and ears. There's only, depending on what time of day, there could be two or four police officers on, usually two people on patrol. So depending on what's going on some other place, it's a small town, but still with business, we'll act on everything. And I ask everyone and make sure to ask the police officer to call you back. I tell them, I want you to call everybody back even if they don't say it because it completes the cycle. It's a better contact. But your eyes and ears, quality of life crimes or quality of life offenses, it's been found out that if you address those, other things, larger things will be taken care of. So don't be afraid of that. Don't, you don't have to get confrontational with anybody. You don't wanna have to. That's, drop the dime. It's not even a dime. It's free with all your cell phone minutes. So please do it. And do it, do it contemporaneously. Don't be historical because when you try to go back longer and longer periods of time, it's very difficult for us to make something out of a, out of probably a minor thing that we could have identified and spoken with and nipped something in the bud immediately. So thank you. And just like Mr. Schenk was saying, 911, call 911. They'll prioritize our calls and if we're on something else, we can't get there, that happens occasionally, then we'll get back there or call you back. So please, we're there for you.
Hi, I'm Damon Herb, 520 Coats Street. So, good evening, everybody. It's nice to hear that, obviously, like showing face here to see what's going on with the park. That's why I'm here. And, you know, I've only been a resident for a year now in Bridgeport. So I think the number one things that like, or what I think of when I, you know, playing, having my, I have a three-year-old son, so bringing him to the park and seeing, you know, and now obviously realizing that progress is being made and stuff's getting done. There's money that's being pushed around or tried to be, trying to be. I think the only things that I bring up from like a perspective that I look at with the park is it's almost like there's, and I don't know when it was, when it was built, but there's like, I think like the smaller, like younger kids section of the park. That playground is, I think, more recent than the other side. It's really the bigger section. It's almost like, like I, I mean, it's hard with, I think most people have kids or, you know, know when kids play, like you can't really, you can control them to an extent, but not really. I think that that part of the park is almost getting like unsafe. So I don't know, and this is from my perspective, like I don't know if it'd be better that rather than put a Band-Aid on it for temporarily, you know, is it a smarter decision to like knock some of that down? Because that's my concern with my son is like, I bring him there and like some of the sharper edges, I mean, there's bare metal, like, you know, some sections have been like blocked off or, I mean, at least the one slide's blocked off that's damaged. So I don't know if that's like an option to, you know, obviously everything's gonna move how it moves, but to see something like that happen that must be like, put it to green space for a certain period of time. I'd rather that than, you know, have kids get injured because that, that's kind of what I see, you know, when I look at that playground and, you know, but again, it's nice to see, like, I'm not one to complain or anything like that online. I know you've said you've taken some pressure, but, you know, I'd rather show up and, and explain to you guys from what, like my perspective. And at least from my background, you know, I don't know if that would be as big of an expense to just kinda make it, you know, green space for the time being until we make a decision. I don't think the park's going anywhere. It's a wonderful park, you know? I think a lot of the community does use it and uses the walking trail, uses all those spaces. It's really just the, you know, the age of it and, and, you know, the weather, time wins all battles. So, you know, at the same time, like it's gonna wear away. I just don't wanna see someone get hurt. And I think the only other thing that I think of mostly is the rubber. I think in the middle of summer, it's 100 degrees. I think the rubber is like, definitely like, I mean, again, I bring my son up there and like I can't breathe up there. So I would say maybe transition that to just wood chips, which is, you know, a pretty easy alternative in the time being, if that's a possibility. But, you know, that's what I came here to, to say from my perspective. And, you know, and I'd like to speak with you about offering help because I have the means to do so. So, you know, I would like to, if I can, offer services that way. So...
I see the bulldozer on your hoodie.
Yes.
I see where you're going.
Right, right. I have equipment and stuff like that. I mean, I'd like to lend a hand to the community if I can, you know, to do something like that, 'cause it is...
Congratulations. Congratulations. You've just been named...
You're hired.
Playground engineer.
Great.
I think we were...
It's funny we're, we're having this conversation because I was just passing a note about ensuring the safety of the equipment...
Right.
...to council president. So, I mean, it has to be done. It's important that'll be done. And I could tell you, I think council's 100% behind that.
Right. And I think like, you know, again, things, there'll hopefully be a park built, but in the, you know, in the short term to see that, you know, I don't want kids going up there getting, like playing on it. And I mean, there's some sections that are missing that, you know, have just become in disrepair, which I understand, you know? And rather than put a Band-Aid on it and try and spend, you know, $8,000 on this or whatever on that, like that might be an alternative to, you know, and some people might see that as progress, which might be, you know, a good thing. So...
I think we were looking into removing a couple of specific structures from the park for that exact reason.
Right.
So that might be happening, hopefully soon.
You'll see though. If you would, if you would go up there, you'll see. There's like, I mean, there's a, there's a fence that splits the two park, the playgrounds from each other and it's the one that's on the left if you're coming from the steeper, I guess right where the park faces, you know, the left park is the one, playground is the one that's, you know, in disrepair at that point. It's just age and it's, it's understandable.
We did have someone assess it too. We did have somebody from the borough go over and so it's moving slowly, but...
Mr. Bennett, do you have any just comments on, you know, potentially taking anything down? I would imagine you guys have discussed this.
No, we have. Actually, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna say things and then be held to them, but we've talked about a lot of things, including, it's a giant playground.
Yes.
And I'll tell you, here's a story on wood chips. Wood chips have gone in code, out of code and back in. Our problem with wood chips, I don't wanna take up too much, or get into too much, I could talk to you about this for days.
I think there's so many alternatives to it.
But the problem with wood chips at our park is that we have a drainage issue. So we initially had wood chips there and there was mold growth in that surface. So we went to the rubberized wood chips, which, and did a draining project, which met the need. They were, they stayed clean and didn't grow mold and that's what we chose to use. The, you know, the greatest ideal surface would be poured in place rubber, but now you're talking about, you know, you're talking about a...
Whole separate...
An $800,000, yeah. That, that's also the only way to make it truly ADA compliant and completely inclusive. And it's just on a, I think you, on a playground that size, poured in place, you just don't see them even in a, you know, an extremely wealthy community. Doesn't have surfaces like that. You're right about the different age. The one park, the smaller toddler park, we'll call it, that's the John Todd Memorial Park, that is 10 years younger than the main park and it shows. And there's two structures as of last year that need to be removed from the main playground that were code compliant 30 years ago that are no longer acceptable. And our inclusive swings, our ADA compliant swings are no longer acceptable either. That's an issue of, you know, your Traco digging up some concrete.
Right, right.
So I think that, that hits all your questions.
No, no.
Yeah.
I, I guess that, yeah, the rules are always changing. So that's something that's...
I, right. And some of the things that you would, you would think that they'd be screaming about they're not, and I don't mean, I mean, just, you know, national codes, they're not screaming about and some of the things they ignore, we care, you know, the local cares more about than national.
Right, right.
But we, but just about, as you mentioned, Gana Fleming, our engineering firm, did review last year. A representative from our playground equipment provider did do a walkthrough and they both basically came back with the same report as far as the disposition of the equipment on a playground.
Right, right. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dana Thompson, 416 Coats Street. If the borough is securing grants for the park, who decides how that money is spent? How are those decisions gonna be made?
There's a project scope to every grant and it delineates what you can and cannot spend that money on.
Okay. I have a couple more questions for Randy. So how many vacancies do you have on the board right now?
Just one.
Do you anticipate any vacancies?
I, I can't answer that with any assurance right now. I, I can answer that, and not to be a wise, you know, not to be fresh, but I could, I can't answer that with any more assurance than I can answer if it's, you know, gonna rain in the next 10 days. I really can't.
So if I wanted to get involved in the community fund, do I have to live in the borough?
Yes.
I guess I don't know how to ask this without being rude, but do you live in the borough?
Well, look, I didn't come to be confrontational. I think I've come here under good faith. I think I've explained that. Hold one minute. I came here on a heart monitor. I did not come to be confrontational. I didn't come to... No, the answer's no. And as I've said, we're doing some transitioning on the park board. So if, if you, I'll answer any question. I've came, I came here, I walked through the door, okay, to face a group of people. If you wanna ask a question, just ask the question. You don't have to do your pause and your timing. I'm not, I'm not here to get beat up. That's just all there is to it.
Yeah. And I'll say, Mr. Bennett, you have been very, we've had a good relationship here working on this. And you, like I said, when you gave your report, it was very upfront with all the details. And in the last year, we have an agreement where we're working really hard together. And I think it's hard to see that sometimes on the outside, but I really appreciate what we've been able to do. And I, I think the results will be good and I'm grateful that we have made this progress.
I, I would just add that through the leadership here on council, you're being provided the opportunity to speak. And if we wanted to be hyper technical, as a non-resident of Bridgeport, we could keep you from speaking. We're trying to be inclusive. We're trying to get everybody involved, hear this out and get through this issue. But, but understand, you're asking a question to him that you, you could be asking of yourself.
Well, so here's, so I, I have a Bridgeport address. My children go to Bridgeport Elementary School. I serve on the parent teacher committee at that Brits, elementary school that uses the park. So I...
That, all those reasons are why this council, this council, let me finish.
I've been told to pound sand in many ways.
Let me finish.
I'd like to hear from an elected member of council.
Let me finish. Let me finish. The council is indulging you and not stopping you from speaking.
Thank you.
However...
I would love to be a part of the solution.
However...
But I'm being locked out.
However, you are not a resident of Bridgeport. So if council was inclined, they would not have to entertain your comments. They're not telling you not to comment despite that. They're saying, come on in and say what you have to say. This is the second opportunity you've had now.
I don't have any issue with council. I'm just asking questions.
Okay. And that's fair, but I wanna make sure you understand that when you pose that question to someone, that same question can be posed to you.
Sure thing. My last question is, I've looked and I, I don't understand. It's what, what is the, the stat, the tax, like the IRS code for the community fund? Are you a 501(c)(3) or is it a different structure?
Again, I'm not the treasurer and I've never sat in the accountant's office for those, those processes and documents being filled out. As far as I know, we are a 501(3) C.
Randy, I could be, I could be wrong. Not that it matters in the least for the purposes of this conversation. I think you might be a 501(c)(6).
We did, there was some issue a couple years ago where we went, they changed the amount below 26,500. Honestly, I don't know the, those details.
Yeah, the provision evidently is with regard to being a park. So it's the same, it's the equivalent of a 501(c)(3), but when you're a park, it's (c)(6), is how I understand it. Right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for coming out. Or was there additional comments?
Mr. Bennett, thanks for, thanks for coming out.
To you, Mr. Bennett, if you want to answer them.
I'm good.
Are you okay? I'm a nurse.
No, no, I'm good. I'm good. I just don't wanna, if it spikes, then I'm gonna get yelled at.
This should be on.
I'll put it back on when this is on.
My name's Karen Brooks. I live at 708 Beach Court. I, first of all, really appreciate the information that you have shared. I've been living here for seven years now and every year, I think I emailed with Megan a few weeks back and thank you so much for the information that you shared. She shared the work that was being done to address some of the things that were happening at the playground. I just wanted to make a suggestion. I, and I don't know how to operationalize this, but I think that just the information that was shared tonight between Randy and yourselves in terms of the grant money needs to somehow be disseminated to the community because there is not a good understanding about what's happening with the playground. And every single year, this bubbles up on social media and I've seen, you know, you as the representative of the community fund bear the brunt of those questions and a lot of the, the frustration that the community feels about the playground. My other comment, Mr. Hill, I appreciate the comment you made about not using that $50,000 to kind of, you know, repair things piecemeal, but sort of in line with what the other gentleman was saying. I, my take is if you were to just replace the swings at the playground, I think that that would be extremely well received and just sort of like a visual of we are working toward something. I don't think that that would be a significant financial investment of the $50,000 to, to put six swings back on the apparatus. And I, I understand where you're coming from completely. I just, I think that any, any gesture of goodwill or progress or whatever you can do to show the community this is being addressed outside of sharing all the information you shared tonight would be really well received by the families who utilize the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
The swings are an issue that, as crazy as this sounds, and they are, it's financially, it's doable. It's the low, it would be the lowest hanging fruit, but to do them in a way that would be worth it and prevent that future vandalism that happens every single day to the swings would be thousands, you know, in the $5,000 range. It's crazy. And if you said you're wrong, I, I understand why you would say that's a crazy number, but it actually, the hardware to make that correct is pretty expensive, but it's, it's the low hanging fruit that could be done. And no matter how we reconfigure the playground, I would imagine the swings are gonna stay where they're at.
Yeah, great suggestion.
And they're, they're safe otherwise?
They're not, by our, I don't know that they showed up on your report, but from our, the playground company, they're not, they're safe, but they're not compliant any longer. They should have plastic chain guards where you, you know, when the whole, where you hold them.
How much would all that be? Do you have any idea?
A few years ago, that and then the tangle-free hardware for the top was in the neighborhood of 5,000 for the swings that we have.
I'm gonna defer to Roger with regard to the overall safety of the facility, but I'm involved with a nonprofit and I'm gonna recommend that they donate the swings as long as Roger can bless it from a safety perspective.
Yeah, I can look into that and, and get some detailed pricing.
Okay.
That's it. Randy, thank you so much for, or, I'm sorry, Laura, you are com-
Hi, I'm Laura Gamble, 441 Depot Street. I was just wondering what the relationship looks like between the Little League, the parks and rec board, the fund and council? If anyone could elaborate on how relationally the community knows who to go to at different times and who can, hopefully, I don't know, Keith looks like he's smiling at that. I don't know.
Not, not smiling at your question, just smiling at trying to parse through the question.
Like responsibility for which portion, like do the fields have one group of pool of money and then, and then the park has another?
So, so Laura...
Insurance-wise, all that kinda stuff.
The, the, the borough carries property and, and property and liability insurance on the park on behalf of the, of the park board and the community fund. That said, each of the different groups, whether it's the Bachi League or Bridgeport Little the Bachi League or Bridgeport Little League, must carry their own insurance riders for their respective organizations. In the event that somebody gets injured doing Bachi or baseball-related activities, probably more baseball than Bachi. Bachi, like Bridgeport Little League, has certain responsibilities. And Randy, you would know far better than I how this cat is actually skinned. But each of those organizations have certain maintenance and upkeep duties that they're responsible for. During the season, Bridgeport Little League has to maintain the confines of the ball diamonds that they utilize. We also have a standing agreement with Upper Marion School District to mow and maintain the majority of the rest of the park. I find that frequently, Bridgeport Public Works needs to go up there and clean up even after the school district has done their job. But that's a story for another day. We appreciate the help that the school district provides. And what other questions do you have, Laura?
Keith, I think we need to back up and say, like, so a lot of townships and burrows, there's a parks department, right, that runs all the parks? But Bridgeport Borough is different in that there's a parks board where, as far as a community fund, there's a community fund that purchased these lands a while ago.
Century ago.
And so, the land is actually mostly owned by the community fund, but not entirely. The borough also owns a portion of it, which is why it's complicated in trying to figure out who does what. And we've been trying to work together for many years, but we were, in the last year or so, able to put together an operating agreement where we clearly delineated who does what and who pays for what and all of that. So, we're on a great road to getting it all together and, you know, moving the grant along and all that. But that's kind of the... I think we needed to back up a little bit further than that.
Can I just add?
Yes.
Can I just add too? If you think of it as the fund is the landlord, and Bachi and Little League and Upper Marion Middle School are tenants.
Okay.
So, they come in and they have... Rather than pay money, they have obligation. That's their payment. And they have to ensure the fund, the borough, and anybody participating.
Okay. And Megan, is the liaison between all entities, including the Little League? Or is there no relationship between Little League and Bachi with...
I am the liaison with council and the park board. And then the park, you know, the park board just keeps me apprised of what's going on with Bachi and Little League. There's a lot of little hands all over the place.
And the other entities are just tenants. Unless they do something wrong, they're allowed to run their own operations. They just use our real estate.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, the relationships are all improving. But one of the problems, as you're a parent and I'm a parent, that exists right now with a lot of clubs is that there's a lot of asked of parents and kids, and people are being pulled in a lot of directions. So, like, it used to be, years ago, when Sal was young, back then, where the parents... There was a lot more parent activity and involvement in things. And there's a lot of great parents in Bridgeport, but they're just stretched thin sometimes. So, I think that there's... Sometimes there's like two really active people in town, and the park board would like to have those two people, and the Little League would like to have those two people, and the PTC would like to have those two people. So, it's a challenge, and it's not one that we can easily fix. Anyone can fix.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for your information.
Thank you.
We typically identify a contact person with all those entities. For instance, the Little League has a gentleman and a board member that we say, "We just want one point of contact as far as the community fund's concerned. Just makes it easy for us. We're not telling five different stories that get told five different ways." So, that's kind of the relationship there. We don't operate or help operate any of those. We just consider them recreational partners. As long as they file their insurance paperwork. If they're working with youth, we require a document that certifies that they're, you know, cleared to work with children, and their volunteers are good to go. And we let them do their thing. We let them operate on their own.
I just want to tell everybody. My name is Father Ronnie. I live on the top of the mountain there in Bridgeport, as high as I can take it. I can't walk up that hill anymore. I have to get help. But I want to thank you guys for the park because it's keeping me alive. I'm the oldest-serving priest in the entire state, thanks to that park, to a large degree, as long as the weather's warm, because I can't go up that park when it's freezing. But you know, I find my... A lot of my sheep are up there, you know? Sometime, they're lost sheep. I won't mention any names. Black sheep, you know? Other kind of sheep. But I meet all kind of people, and I love it, and I thank everybody involved with the park, Randy and the whole crew here. And I left some presents for all you good folks with my man Kyle here, right? And he promised he's going to pass them on to you. It concerns a big gathering in our church, in our hall, on the 13th of April, 13th of April, right? And it's Palm Sunday, and our children told me to come down here and tell you to please come and watch them. They're going to be onstage. I have nearly 100 children in my Sunday school, all ages, all countries. We've got immigrants from Ukraine, from Poland, from Mexico, other places. And so, they're going to show you how Jesus came to Jerusalem. And so, they went out and made a donkey. It doesn't look like a donkey, but they call it a donkey. And they're going to have somebody ride this little trap, and they put together like a wagon, like Jesus in a wagon. It's going to be cool. So, it's 13th, you know, come, please. It's all free. And if you come, you get a free meal of all the eggs and ham and what else? Potatoes, bacon, anything you want, because our ladies are going to prepare a nice breakfast for everybody.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful. We'll be there.
Thank you very much.
What time is it, Father?
It's... We start at 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning, Sunday. We'll be onstage. We'll be over by 11:00. Enjoying some good breakfast. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you for coming and letting us know.
Randy, I just want to say thank you so much for coming and presenting to council and also taking everybody's questions, no matter how rough it may have gotten. I appreciate you answering everybody's questions. And I just want to say, as, you know, having had multiple meetings with you and the rest of the park board over like the last year or two, however long I've been liaison, and I know that we've... I'll say very creatively, used words loudly at each other at times. That doesn't mean that like I don't appreciate the work that the board does and that your core group of volunteers, that you guys have done a great job with trying to get the Parks and Rec program, the, you know, like the Saturday, like spring, summer, fall programs back up at the park. And I know that you've been working with what you have, and I'm hoping that, you know, with us having this new funding agreement, that we'll be able to finalize some things with getting new parks equipment. And I know that there have been some hiccups, but I think that we'll get back to having that good, interdependent relationship with the board. But I just want to say that I do appreciate you all, and especially since you have been through the wringer over the past year on social media, that I do appreciate the work that you all have done.
Thank you.
Can I add just one more thing? And I know this is dragging on longer than anybody would like. But I want to remind everyone that the fund is a private entity. It is not a governmental entity. So, unless their documents require anyone to be a resident, no one else can require that. Okay? They don't have to be a 501(c)(3). They don't have to be a 501(c)(6). They could be anybody. They just own real estate. So, please don't... I understand why people confuse it with the borough. It's confusing, because they're both involved with each other so inextricably intertwined. However, the reality is that they are a private entity. They can do whatever they want to do with their real estate. And the fact that they've continued to work with the borough benefits the community. So, just bear that in mind. I know it's complicated. I know it's confusing. I've been explaining this for 25 years, because it is... It's not intuitive at all. So, keep it in mind and try to understand that everybody is, on both sides, is trying to do the right thing for the benefit of the borough.
I would agree with that. And is there anything else from council? I would only... I can only say, you know, what I can say. And like I said, we're kind of in a transitional period with the board. There's members on there that take that ground personally. You know, Mr. Bell, you know what it's like to come up through that program. And it means a lot to walk onto that ground and continue to work onto that ground. Up until the last conversations I had with Nick Rotondo, Sr., the one-on-one conversations, they continued to focus on the park and what we were doing there and how it was going. I promise you that, right? And you know, that's how it was. The board members, like Megan said, that there's been contention, okay, from all members to other members. But no one there has any ill will or any bad intention at that park. That I promise you. And no one's trying to do anything below board. We just, you know, we just want to present events and present a park that's acceptable to the community. And that's what we're trying to work on doing.
Well, I just want to say, actions do speak louder than words. And turn around, they want action. They're looking for it. So, we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
I think they took them out. Since it is public comment, are there any additional members of the public that would like to comment this evening? All right, we can... Yeah, go ahead.
Not about the park stuff, though, right?
Yeah, right. This is... We moved the public's comment section.
My name's still Laura Gamble, 441 Depot Street. I was talking to a couple of people, and I know that in previous meetings, we've talked about a lot of the dog poop issues. I was wondering, would it be helpful, is there a way, as part of those grants or some other grants, that we can get like maybe some small trash cans in a few areas along commonly-used routes that can be put in? I mean, there's obviously some along this corridor, but in some other areas that perhaps that could also... I don't have a dog myself, but I know other people don't like walking around far distances with poop in their hand. Is that something that could get looked into or has been looked into or...
I think it's something we can look into without grants, and it's something that Mr. Truman can look into in general, if people... If we know about certain intersections. So, it's... I know we have some trash cans in places, but it's something to definitely look at in general. So, just because we... It's not something we need to wait for a grant for necessarily.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
All right. If there are no other items, then anyone else would like to chat? Okay, we can move on from public comment. Just really quick, we're already kind of running a little bit on time, so I will keep this short. But something that kind of stood out to me in the last two weeks, you know, we... I love to highlight our staff because I think they're fantastic. In addition to that, I think that our community runs really well with some other entities and partners. And a couple of them that come to mine are volunteers. I think a lot of what we do wouldn't really operate well or at all without a lot of the volunteers that we have. So, I just want to thank everybody. And specifically, our partners as well. I had the chance to tour a bit more the Norristown Library and met with their head there and learned a lot about a lot of programs and about how, you know, you're able to kind of go there for the library, but also for a lot of different programs as well that are really useful to our community. So, I want to encourage everybody to check it out and check out your local library. I just think it's important to support and find out what they have to offer, as well as the community cupboard that I got a chance to visit, which we visited before, but just learned a little bit more about their programming and how they help Bridgeport. And just kind of reminded me of the great partnerships we have in this borough, as well as Mr. Bell, specifically, in this conversation mentioning that the nonprofits that are within our reach and that partner with us that help us accomplish a lot. So, definitely wanted to just extend a thank you to them and encourage everybody to volunteer in all these different organizations in different spaces. So, we can move on here to our next item. For council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-07, authorizing application to the Monaco Community Development Block Grant Program.
Make the motion.
Borough-wide street improvements. We have a motion from Ms. Hug.
Second that.
You have a second, Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion, thank you. Carrie, thank you.
Just real quick. It's a $200,000 request. It's a CAT word capped. That's the max award. And this money would go towards the resurfacing of streets and alleys.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Council considerations, accepting the resignation of Mary Jo Dickinson from the Bridgeport... I missed it. All right, moving back up one. Sorry, I didn't see that one. For council consideration, authorization to advertise the job vacancy for our public works, labor...
I'll make the motion to advertise.
A second.
Motion from Mr. House, second from Ms. Hig. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, back to this one. For council consideration, we have accepting the resignation of Mary Jo Dickinson from the Bridgeport Pension Committee and advertising that vacancy. Thank you for her service. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Nolan, second from Ms. Hug. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public?
I'll just thank Mary Jo for all of her service. She's been a real asset to the community for many years.
Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Yes, thank you for your service. All right. Next up for council consideration, we have authorization to pay the bills and salaries for March 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Schenk, second from Mr. Ohio. Do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And then for the vacancy, we're advertising that on the Facebook page. Is that where people can find it?
The website as well, yes.
Fantastic. So, if anyone's interested, feel free to check it out and send your application or resume. We can move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business anyone would like to discuss? All right, seeing there's none, we can move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? All right, we can move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jackson.
Thank you. Well, this is the last time I get to make this announcement, because Founder's Day 2025 is happening this Saturday at Borough Hall from noon to 4:00 p.m. Please make sure to stop by to vote for your favorite chili, support our lifetime award winners, who will be Dennis Demetrius, Dr. George Homa, and Lauren Latanzi. You can peruse the local businesses in our vendor fair, grab some exclusive event swag, and much more. And the weather apparently looks really nice. I don't want to jinx that, but come and enjoy that as well. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, how many vendors do we have for chili? Weren't you saying it's a lot already?
Well, we have vendors and then also the chili.
Consider that a vendor.
Okay. We're going to have anywhere between 13 to 15 different chilis to try. It's going to be really good. I mean, I'll reach out to you. I imagine that the volunteers are not all here at the same time, though. That would be wonderful.
We said the volunteers are a huge part of Bridgeport.
Very much so. Yeah, if they're on my list to volunteer, then I'm going to reach out to them soon. Thank you. I'm seeing that it's going to be 81 degrees. Woo-hoo!
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll take it.
Chief, you're up next.
All right. Good evening, Bridgeport. Just some incidents that occurred recently. We did have a pedestrian struck accident on the 15th of March. We're on Ford at Front Street. It was a minor injury. Someone just walked between two cars. Thankfully, it was a minor injury. Back in February, February 6th of 2025, we had a car stolen from the Tap House. We subsequently, within the last week, arrested two people connected to that arrest of the stolen car. So, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Peralta are going to be at the Montgomery County Prison and thinking about their misdeeds. For the last couple of weeks, we had five retail thefts, arrests, two warrant arrests, two DUI arrests, one domestic violence arrest, one harassment arrest, and one assault arrest from a local location. As far as the dog ordinance go, just listening to what people say, I did post something. And the next time around, Mr. Truman, when we have to post things with regards to the tax billing and the publication, the next publication, I'll put something out about that. But the dog ordinance, you know, you need to... But the dog ordinance, you know, you need to have your dog leashed to be under actual physical control, so do so. I've stopped people myself, and then I, since I drive a undercover light blue Honda CR-V, tell them!
All right, like I was just going to say.
There is no secret about that by now.
Cover's blown.
Vice President, that's been blown for a long time now. But, but...
You're the fight is coming a mile away.
Yeah, there you go. Well, they gave me a universal sign of appreciation initially, and then, you know, then we just adjusted it. But, so we're no problem with doing that, because it's all about just fixing people's behaviors little bits, whether they're children or adults. So we're up for that, though. So don't be afraid to call us, and again, we'll make a report. We have a new reporting system, and our guys are out there. So also, just a reminder, depending on what part of the Bridgeport you live, if there's a handicapped spot, don't park it unless you're handicapped and have a placard on your car or hanging. If there's a fire hydrant, do not park your car by a fire hydrant. If you live in a place where it says no parking, please don't park where it says no parking. This sounds like, you shouldn't have to say that, but I'm doing it, especially since we have fire engines, we have police cars, we have trash trucks that need to get here and through. So don't create issues that, you know, that the local government has to respond to if you can. We will and have been issuing parking tickets for the same thing. So I thank you for that, as far as Founder's Day and the mayor's road closure, which will be initiated at 10:00 a.m. until upwards of 6:00 p.m. And the road closure is just really Mill Street between Third and Fourth Street. But we thank, we thank the mayor, thank council, should be a great event. I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, we can move on to new business. Looks like we have one item. Mr. Truman, if you'd like to...
Thank you, President Alzada. I need to report to council that there was a personnel move made. On March the 18th, Mr. Michael Brown was discharged from the Public Works Department. That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Do we have any additional new business items to discuss? All right, we can move on to open forum announcements. Are there any announcements today? All right, we can move on to adjournment. It is...
To adjourn.
8:49. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. We are adjourned.